One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Please remember to silence your phones and pagers. First item is citizen concerns. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak on any particular topic?
Come on up to the microphone there.
But if it's on the agenda, he'll...
He has a question about the consulting fee for $24,000 on the Tross泊霍ite buildings with the resource consulting.
That'll come up on that agenda items up then.
Any other citizens concerned? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. I will second that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item three through six constitute a consent agenda of breaking action items to be considered by one motion. Items passing unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the amendments of the March 6th, 2018 meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five, county auditor received the appointment of Brock Boyle to the Danbury City Council. Item six is Board Administration, Public Vitters, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in 014, also known as 2411 Boyce Street, setting for Tuesday, March 27th at 4:35. That is the end of the consent agenda. I will move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Duitt, second by Mr. Taylor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. A little bit early, but Mr. Gill should recite. All right. Melissa, item eight. We'll skip to Melissa with the intention of going.
Is this when you come up to bid?
Not yet. No, it's at 4:35. Couple minutes left. Item eight is Human Resources. First item with approval to increase the salary range for environmental project and energy management supervisor.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources. We're asking that the amount, the top amount of that salary be raised to $64,000 with the motion today. We have shown that with the changing of the department, eliminating some jobs and some weak custodian position, we are still saving some funds there to raise the limit on that job, so.
So this is, these funds would already be coming from within the department?
The budget, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from Melissa?
Humvee day.
I will second that. Motion by Potabom, second by Duitt, for approval to increase the salary range for the environmental project and energy management supervisor. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. We're at the time, Melissa, for the public sale. We are now at the fixed time of 4:35 for the public hearing and sale of property parcel ending in 022, also known as 1615 Pear Street. Do we have any, yeah, public?
Public hearing first.
For those in favor or against of selling of the property.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. We are now open to bidding for the property sale of 1615 Pear Street. If you have something, identify yourself, sir.
My name's Danny Robinson, and I bid, minimum bid, 326 or whatever.
$326?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have any other vitters on the property? I'm sorry, that was 236?
236, I'm sorry.
I think 326.
326.
326, yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have 326?
Hearing no other vitters, Mr. Chair, I move that the property be sold to Mr. Robinson in the amount of $326.
I will second that. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you. We're moving item 8B, approval of memorandum of personnel arrangements. Quite a lengthy list.
Well, we just added all the reserves this time, so it's quite a big class they have.
I'd move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Mr. Reddick, approval of memorandum of personnel arrangements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item A C, approval of request to deauthorize county position.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any other questions or comments?
These are all in reaction to the reorganization mentioned earlier. Thank you.
These last two, deauthorizations and authorizations.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item A C, 8D, authorize to initiate the hiring process.
I'd move authorization to initiate the hiring process.
I will second. Motion by Taylor, second by Duitt, to authorization to initiate the hiring process. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We're a little bit ahead of our next public set time hearing, so Kenny, would you want to start with item 10A?
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. Item 10A is for HVAC, repairs and upgrades at the law enforcement center. Most of these items are, became visible after we got the front-end system hooked up at the LEC and were able to get a better understanding of what that building was doing, or, as I may put it more appropriately, not doing. So we found many items that have not been repaired and were neglected or had been replaced in several different ways, whereas they do not communicate with one another and don't communicate with our newer front-end system. And so this would replace some valves and actuators, install some control devices. That would bring that building in line with our front-end system where we could get a better handle on what it's actually doing and to allow us to really get some, get some control over the areas that are non-functioning. And in many instances, these, the repairs or applications would be made to the main air handling systems of the building.
Sir.
Kenny, how much of a practical effect will this have on either creature comforts, energy conservation and savings, or proper ventilation, or is this more of removing the ball downfield so that we can get there eventually, given how much work and deferred maintenance, for lack of a better term, was done?
I believe that this will do a little of all of that for us. Currently, since we don't have control over some of these areas where they're non-functioning, there's no way to control what the space is doing for creature comfort, and there's also no way to control the energy usage and/or savings. In one instance, we found that a chilled water valve in one of our buildings just wasn't in place. It's gone. There's not one there. So it's tough to control the system when you have no way of controlling it whatsoever. And so certainly, certainly you will gain some energy usage or savings by gaining control and also some creature comforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Building Services Director?
I'd move approval of $77,603 for the upgrades and repairs to the LEC HVAC areas outlined in the quote by Star Controls.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. Oh, lost my place here. We've still got a couple minutes, Kenny. We don't want to go on with item 10B, approval to make necessary equipment upgrades and repairs to the Tross泊霍ite HVAC system in the amount of $115,700.
Building Services respectfully requests that we pull that agenda item for today and come back at a different date at the request of our attorney.
I will second the motion by Mr. Taylor to...
Delete it from the agenda?
Uh-huh.
Delete it from the agenda?
To pull it from the agenda for...
Postpone action.
Postpone action? Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Let's see. Item 10C, approval of HVAC studies for the LEC and Tross泊霍ite buildings with resource and consulting engineers in the amount of $24,000.
Resource consulting engineers have provided us plans for two different studies, one for the Tross泊霍ite and one for the LEC, each at $12,000. I combined them on one agenda item for $24,000. This is to study our buildings, determine a best way forward as our aging systems are beginning to need attention, and we need a route in place for the future on how to address replacement of units and upgrades. And I'd ask Shane Albrecht from the Baker Group to come up and say a few words about that. Shane, if you would.
Shane Albrecht, Baker Group, we've seen each other many times. Basically, what this is doing is helping you get the roadmap as we were tasked with, putting an engineer in that's going to give a plan for where to go forward, help with a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and where the board's moving forward. Helps have a look at for best practices of where you should go and help you build a budget so it addresses your CIP needs in the future and helps set the county up so that you can move forward with bettering out your buildings and your spaces. Is there any questions?
What additional HVAC needs are there? Are we just doing controls at this point and we haven't done anything to the HVAC system?
So like at Tross泊霍ite, you still have both a pneumatic and a DDC control systems. The part that, right now, what the main part of what Kenny's proposals that were before you are, is just to repair to get it up to functioning status, but it's still all in the 20-plus year old range. So whether it's a one or two a year replacement that you guys need to start budgeting for or whether it's a new system, sorry, time?
Nope, yep, we're up against the set time of 4:45 for the public hearing to level, to levy general basic property tax rate which exceeds statutory maximum. Item 9A.
This will be our third year in a row here that we have had demands upon our general basic fund where we had to exceed the cap. We are required to have a separate public hearing, just let the public know what we're doing, and then go ahead with our regular other budget items.
Okay.
The new cap, or where we will be at will be $3.69.59.
And the public hearing is now open?
Yes.
Yes.
For any public comments, and we're done with that.
We're in public hearing for the general basic property tax rate.
Hearing no public comment, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I will second that by Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. 9A passes five to zero. Item 9B, public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2019 budget.
On this item here, I can either give a recap now, I did do that, the same recap I included last week, the week before, and, or I give recap when we actually get into the budget cycle, but it has been published, as was submitted and approved by the board. This is just for any public input, if there's any, anyone's comment.
Public hearing open? Public hearing is open for proposed fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If we could have our budget analysts go ahead and do a rundown, I think that would be beneficial to the public at large, and then if there was any comment, we could entertain it or either close the public hearing.
Okay. We'll start with the new proposed tax rates. On the countywide levy, it is actually going down approximately 12.6 cents per thousand, which is a $1.70 decrease percent-wise, or I mean 1.7% decrease. On the county township-only levy, it's going down approximately 84 cents per thousand, which is an 8.13% decrease. Our total budget is actually going up 1.698, increase over the current, or current year. It must be remembered in our tax asking and tax rates that we are including 865,000 as a refund to CF, as a start of 20-year program that we agreed to. So it does inflate our budget by 865,000 and our tax asking by 865,000. When we get to different classes of property, I broke it down two ways in the cities and three ways in the townships. In the residential in Sioux City, $100,000 assessed house, rollback, will have a decrease of $16.79, and that represents a 3.98% decrease. On the commercial property, they have $11.37 decrease, which amounts to 1.70%. We get out in the townships. Out there, the residential classes, these are residentials outside the city limits. They are getting a tax decrease, a $100,000 house, rollback to the taxable value, $60.68, or 10.27% decrease. Commercial property, we get a decrease of $76.06 per 100,000 assessed value, which is 8.15% decrease. Ag lands will have an increase on $100,000 assessed value, rollback, $40.54, or 8.47%. The reason there's an increase in the ag lands, property values have gone up, and the state rollback increased 7%. So that's the reason the rural ags increased.
That's strictly a state deal? That's nothing that we control?
Well, it's assessments by our county assessor, getting up to the proper values, which she has a formula, set by state.
Okay.
Also, rollbacks are set by the state. The Woodbury County Board has no jurisdiction over either one of those. Every once in a while, you do have a shift in land class. What land class picks up their proportion this year having to be ag lands because of the increase in land values. Now, the rollbacks are shown below, but they're, on the residential rollback, decreased 2.32%. Ag land increased 14.63%. Commercial stayed the same. In regards to commercial rollback, we do get backfill from the state of Iowa. There's legislation that probably will pass. We're going to phase this rollback, backfill down. I think next year, we're talking about 357,000, it'll affect all of our county funds for fiscal year 1819. Broke down to five funds, it isn't going to vary too much. It's not going to hurt that bad, but it is eventually going to be eliminated down to a certain portion. I think it's a third, a third, a third for the next three years. But just to make the board aware, we'll be short funded a little bit, but when you figure 357,000 on a $34 million tax asking is pretty insignificant, if you look at it that way. Like I say, it's broken down into five funds. I can give you the breakdown next week to tell you, but it's insignificant.
Ask you a couple of clarifying questions. Do you know what portion of the budget is due to cost of living increases, wage increases, any increased benefit that the county is giving employees?
We are not increasing our health insurance this year. We froze that because our fund balance was sufficient, or actually growing a little bit, which gets us more stable in our health insurance fund, self-health insurance. In regards to wages, union contract came in between 2.5% and 3%.
What would that roughly be?
Um, I really don't have that number. No, total. That includes merit increases, step increases through our union wages, includes elected officials and deputies at 2.75, along with a wage plan increase of 2.75.
Do we have any idea of rough ballpark with that, Mike? I'd have to be exact.
It's a guess. It'd probably be, probably around 300,000. You're talking close to 400 employees.
And the reason I wanted to mention this is because, you know, we sort of look at that discussion every year about, is it through increased valuation that the county is able to, or anybody is able to, to lower its levy? And I just want to clarify, if I have these numbers right, you said it's about 1.698 million dollars increased as far as total spending?
Uh, yes.
$865,000 of that is CF, which is essentially a pass-through, isn't new county spending, correct?
Correct.
$300,000 you mentioned is for hardworking and deservedly so compensated employees, correct?
Yes.
Okay? And over $800,000 of that is for an increase in the mental health levy?
Yes.
That will, in future years, be able to buy down our mental health levy? Is that correct? Okay. So that's over $2 million right there, or just thereabout. So I just want to make sure that those three things are noted.
Right.
Thank you.
And this year, we did not use all the money we could have from new valuation. We could have generated close to 2 million, but I think we only used about 600, 700,000 of that 2 million.
Mm-hmm.
That's why our rates could go down. That's all I have for the public hearing part. Any more questions?
If I have one last comment, I think the legislature needs to be careful what it tries to do with local bodies as far as the backfill and keeping to its commitments. So, my two cents.
They've never been careful about it before.
And to be clear, Dennis, this is a public hearing, and you already stated it, but the raises for the elected officials are included in that budget?
Yes, sir.
At 2.75%?
2.75% for elected and deputies, as the same as we're giving a wage plan and elected, or department heads.
Okay.
Just a clarifying question, is that something that we are essentially voting on now by virtue or are we going to vote on that separately?
No, you're having, a public hearing is going on right now. He just communicated that those are in there. You'll vote to close the public hearing, and then any action that you want to take on the budget follows that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further comments on public hearing on item 9B?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I will second the motion by Taylor to close the public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Item 9B is passed five to zero. Item 9C, discretion and adoption of fiscal year 2019 budget and resolution.
I would move it for discussion?
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom, to move discussion of fiscal year 2019 budget and resolution. All those in favor say aye. No.
Had opened the discussion.
Oh, let's do that.
I have to pat some backs here, so you don't want to miss that. Taylor Goodman, Taxpayers Research Council, just wanted to commend the board, Denny, staff. It seems like I do this every, every year, so that's a good thing. 300, sounded like just rough estimates of 300,000, an increase out of your control. That's pretty good, so I just wanted to say good job with levy and good job with, more importantly, keeping expenses down. I was roughly looking at it, and we're still lower than we were three years ago, so there's not too many public entities that can say that, so just wanted to say good job.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Any other discussion?
So now is the time we're voting on?
Yes. It's included in the budget. If you, there's, if you're not going to change anything, then you just vote on the budget. Otherwise, you can handle it as a separate motion.
But if we just vote right now, we're essentially voting for it?
Yep.
So you can make an amendment right now if you're...
I would move adoption of fiscal year 2019 budget and resolution.
It's already been...
Tried to be moved and seconded.
What are you thinking there?
No, I just, I just wanted to make one comment. I'm going to support this, and I'm going to support the 2.75% for elected officials, not only because of the elected officials, I think, do a good job, and their deputies, this is something that I want to make known, their deputies are included in this. And there's no way that we can separate, even if we had the desire to, give a deputy a higher percentage, but with that said, I want to make it known, because I'll hear about it tomorrow, that I won't take the raise. I haven't taken a raise. So I know that's my own personal decision, but I do support this because I do think you all work hard and your deputies work very hard. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Gill, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Potabom?
Aye.
Reddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
How?
Aye.
Duitt?
Passes five to zero.
That's in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to interject one more. You know, Taylor talked about three years lowest levy. This is the lowest levy on the countywide in 14 years. This is the lowest levy in 15 years for your, countywide's 15 years, the rural is 14 years. So done a good job, and it's going well.
Thank you, Dennis. Thanks for all your hard work on that.
One more item we got to do. You have to approve the resolution to adopt. Did we do that pattern? Did you just approve the budget, that approved the resolution?
The budget and the resolution is one motion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. All right, we're moving back to...
10C.
10C, yes.
10C?
We were talking about Tross泊霍ite, so it's got pneumatics as well as DDC controls, but also all these spaces, LEC, Tross泊霍ite, since they were done, nice buildings, great usages, but they've been remodeled for different offices, and they don't necessarily always change the HVAC, so there's walls put up to help look at creature comforts and air flows and different things like that, and help you with the roadmap for the future. That's what, that's what this study will do.
So anything in 10B is not going to be undone by something in 10C, is it?
No.
Okay.
Or 10A. Both of those buildings, so it's both A and B in this study. So it's not the cart before the horse, or if that's the question? If that makes sense. This is actually helping getting the building up so you can actually see it. Right now, there's, there's chillers and boilers that weren't hooked up, different things like that. The LEC's got two boilers that are going to be in need in the next five years to be replaced. This will help with the plan of what that, this thing is. And help get you some budget numbers so that... And help get you some budget numbers so that you know in the future what, what you should be doing in addition to these things.
Sure. Do you feel like this is going to help? I see on here, this is a question last week, what are the practicals or the deliverables that are going to be?
Deliverables.
Right. So one of them is development of budget costs for proposed system replacement and upgrades. Do you feel like this will give the county a leg up when we're going out to bid or quotes to say, look, we've had technical team engineer look at this, and that's way over? Or is that not really something that this will help us do?
Depends on, depends on when you do that.
Meaning if we do it 10 years from now, we're going to be using 2018 pricing?
Yes.
Okay.
Depends on when you qualify this, but it also helps you guys get an understanding, everybody, what, what, what you're going to be looking for to go to in a building. Because there's going to be the ability for input, whether that's supervisors want to, Kenny's input, this is set up so that you could help craft these buildings for what?
Our CIP processes.
Our CIP process, but also for what's going to happen eight years from now. Let's say you're a fan, just going to pick one, VRF, you'd like to see these buildings heading toward VRF or something like that, they'll throw that in in the cost things because that's what you want. If you want to do like for like, we'll look at that in the cost thing, and you'll see just, just, just taking the piece out and putting another one back in. What is, what is that set, and what is a good rotation so that, looking forward, what you guys were talking about, a budget is set up so that you know in 2022, you need to budget 2 million dollars or whatever for all your buildings for fixing things.
So this is somewhat of a roadmap on the HVAC side and some mechanical system sides of the thing that the board has asked for, requests I've had to get a five, a 10, and a 20-year plan for our, for our county buildings. This is just a piece and a part of that process.
You guys had that question. You can come on up to the microphone.
Sir? Okay.
Okay. Approval of the HVAC studies of the LEC and Trosper Hoy buildings with resource consulting engineers and the amount of 24,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any further discussion or questions? We're good?
We're good.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Passes 5 to 0. Thanks, Kenny. We are now at reports on committee meetings.
Mr. Chair, I have two.
Sure.
Uh, thank you. First is Sioux and District Health, Board of Health meeting. I attended March 7th. A couple items of note, uh, on the STD report, the most reportable infections continue to rise, but one of the reasons for that is attributed to better technology and more frequent testing. Also, it was noted that they are training three new clinicians to do female exams to increase their availability. And number two, on March 8th, I attended the policy review committee meeting with Supervisor Radig. Those minutes are drafted. You'll have them in your back of materials next Tuesday. Three actions we took, we will update the disposition of county property policy at the next policy review committee meeting. It needs updating, and Kenny Schmitz was there to provide us some perspective. Secondly, in regards to our substance abuse and drug-free workplace policy, it's a 1996 policy that the committee recommended be rescinded by this board due to conflict or just being outdated when compared to the DOT standards, union contracts, and our own employee handbook. Ms. Thomas will present this at our March 20th meeting. And thirdly, grant monitoring, that process was covered by Michelle Scaff. The auditor's office has requested input from department heads to formulate a new policy or really make sure the existing one is followed. That will need to get formally approved by this board at a future meeting proposed by the auditor's office. And it was also noted that our department heads need to actually comply with, with what we have on paper, which may not be known at this point. So I recommended, Mr. Chair, that you and Vice Chair Radig present something on the compliance side at the next department head meeting in April.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We had a very good and very pleased to announce, as I'm sure you saw in the media, that the Rolling Hills Governance Board voted 5 to 2 in their respective counties to accept Woodbury County in. They have been exemplary as far as their due diligence, their good governance, their transparency in the process, by which they heard, I think, all who were in the room and were concerned, and have done so over a period of three, four months. So the next steps, just so everyone knows, is that their Governance Board will get together. They will craft some language whereby they will forward to their respective county boards as well as Woodbury County, because none of us operate individually, that will come back to us. And so I'm excited about that for the delivery of high-quality mental health services. And going forward, the, the big key, if you haven't seen, is that it's effective July 1st of 2019. And so there will be an interim period whereby Woodbury County may petition to stand alone or take some guidance from DHS. And there is a bill in the legislature on behalf of Sioux and Plymouth Counties to be a two-county entity. And speaking in full transparency with Chairman Mark Luch, their desire is to be a two-county entity, and I can see Woodbury County's desire potentially to operate individually for that one-year transition time. That will need some DHS approval or legislative remedy, but we're exploring our options and very excited about our prospect going forward with Rolling Hills. That's all I have on that.
Any other meetings?
And we have a historical committee meeting coming up on Tuesday. We're going to roll out, I hope, at this next meeting, a fabulous website that WCICC and Supervisor Hung have been involved in. That's going to be a great way to champion the Centennial Movement, May 1st to the 5th, and I think it's going to be a very, very exciting time.
Mr. Radig or Potabom, any other reports? Hearing none. How about citizen concerns? We have another issue for citizens to get up and speak.
Dave Drew, Sheriff. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for the raise on behalf of my command staff. They're tied to my wage, so I appreciate it. Through collective bargaining, sometimes deputies would make more than some of our command staff. So appreciate you recognizing that, Jeremy and Matthew and Rocky, Marty and Keith, because I've exceeded, far exceeded my expectations of ever making money. I started here at 12,000 dollars a year, so, but my guys are tied to what I make, so thank you. And I think there's no citizen that's going to be hurting over that raise. So thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Butler?
Just one more thing, this is the young lady behind me. I have to make it very clear that when I did the 100,000, that's based on 100,000 assessed, rolled back at the new rollback and the old rollback. And when we say there's a tax decrease, that's true. But if your valuation went up or down on your house, that will change the whole scenario. So say you had a $10,000 increase, you may not be paying less taxes. We have to assume, because we can't get in every scenario to say this house went up this much or down this much, we just took the status quo. So I want to kind of make that clear there because she brought the point up, was a legitimate point. Also, we are only 17% of the total tax rate. We do not control the two main entities, which is the city and school district, comprise 80% of the tax rate. So we've done our part. If the valuation of house changes, unfortunately, that can be a plus or minus to their total tax bill. I just want to clarify that, kind of help her out, too. Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Do we have any board concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other week, I participated in a about an hour and a half ride-along of our county secondary roads, put on by a couple gentlemen near Smithland.
Mr. Hung, excuse me? Matthew?
Yes.
Can you speak louder or closer to your phone or whatever? We're having trouble hearing you here.
How's this?
Much better.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, the other week, I participated in a about an hour and a half ride-along of our secondary roads with a couple gentlemen near Smithland, specifically 290th, Jasper, Knox, and Kusuth. I wanted to let the board know, this is my firsthand experience, I certainly did witness some deep ruts in the roads. The crown was not established, as we say, and on Jasper, I believe in particular, it was actually impassable even with an all-wheel-drive pickup. I know we're in the thaw season, but I had asked the county engineer to, I'd asked him to come up, and I have a couple questions. Is there any way, number one, we could devote more funds to gravel on these roads by building up the base before the winter time? I know that gravel costs have increased over the last 10 years, but this is a pretty critical function. And secondly, it was brought up to me that perhaps we could stagger our equipment purchases out to be less frequent, to have more money for gravel. So again, I'm hoping to, to get some comments from the engineer on this, and perhaps it would lead to an agenda item next week.
Um, Martin Arro, Woodbury County Engineer, the first question I heard was whether more money could be put to gravel this year to help build up the base before winter? Is that correct?
Right.
Um, this year, we have budgeted more money for our gravel purchase. One of the challenges that we've had is that the, the cost of our gravel, looking back to 2006, 2008, has more than doubled for the same amount of gravel. We're paying almost double per ton. One of the things that we have done in trying to address getting more gravel out on the roads is we are using 300,000 of the roughly 1.2 million dollars in local money that's coming to us with the 10 cent per gallon fuel tax toward hauling gravel directly to the roads. We're bringing in about 300 tons per mile to those roads, which is about an inch of surfacing, which, as you know, isn't a lot. There's no doubt that additional base would help us. I was out today on Allison, 235th, 225th, some of the roads that we had to bulk up for CF Industries. In the three and a half years of that project duration out there, we hauled over 25,000 tons of gravel to that five miles of road. Those roads used to be perennial problems in the spring. This year, they're solid, and, um, we, we just can't afford to do that whole scale. For a number of years, and this goes back before most of my foreman's recollections, we had switched from a gravel resurfacing program where we put under contract and hauled gravel direct to the roads to more of a spot rock program, which is where a good deal of our effort remains today. We're budgeted for this fiscal year and next to spend roughly 1.1 million dollars on gravel purchase, and then that additional 300,000 for gravel haul direct to the roads. Over the years, we have tried to put as much money as we can toward that process, but again, we, we're getting a nice shot in the arm with the extra dime fuel tax, but it's going to take us a lot of years to, to work out of this program. From about 2010 to 2015, we were buying 30,000 fewer tons per year. At 300 tons per mile, that's 100 miles per year that's not getting gravelled. You stretch that over six years, that's two-thirds of our, our gravel road system that did not see its normal gravel surfacing through that period. So it's going to take us a while to work out of this because we're, we're only now getting back up to what we were buying in around the turn of, you know, 2002 to 2006 area, which is about 140,000 tons here over the next couple of years. You know, those, some of those roads are going to get attention. I know the staff in, I think you're in District Forest Territory, which is Odo, has been out reworking those. You know, the crews are all out trying to do some maintenance plating. We can work roughly half a day right now as far as hauling gravel because we can do as much damage to those roads with heavy loads as, as what anything else can. I, I think we're seeing at a time where our, our gravel purchases were lagging, we were also seeing a tremendous increase in the loads going down the roads. More and more farm-owned semis. 30 years ago, you didn't see a semi in a, in a farm place. Now we see one in almost every one. A gravity wagon held 275 bushels. The latest Kinsey is now over 1,200. We're seeing those going up and down our roads, and, and I think we're starting to see that, that wear and tear. It's a, it's a good thing. It's, we have a lot more mouths to feed today than we did 30 years ago. It's a good thing that farm production in this area can keep up with it, but, you know, our invest, our investment in the roads has lagged. In regard to cutting back on, on new equipment, we did that in 2010 through roughly 2012, where we only bought one motor grader per year. We have 21 of them in the fleet. We paid for that in five engine rebuilds in that period of time, in some of our, some of our motor graders that got out there to where they were getting into the 10,000 to 15,000 hour of operation range. That got quite costly. It's like the old AC Delco commercial, pay me now or pay me later, and we were, we were paying now, or, well, we, we ended up paying to keep everything running. Over the last three years, we've gotten back up to where we're spending about 800,000 dollars a year on, on equipment purchase. Typically, that's buying two motor graders, one tandem truck, some odd and end pickups as we fill in. This year, instead of one of the motor graders for fiscal year 2019, we'll be replacing a 17-year-old excavator that is eating us up on, on replacement, too. You know, we've seen our motor grader prices climb from around 230,000 to over 300,000 now. Just, just inflation, it's, it's hard to keep up. Our fleet value is approaching 20 million dollars. If you're not spending a million dollars a year, that means we're not replacing even 5% of our fleet every year. I, I don't know how we could keep things in line if we cut it back much more than what we're doing right now. Our, our biggest expenditures are after construction, payroll is number one, of course. We have about 4 million dollars in payroll. Gravel comes in there second, and we've been spending in the neighborhood of 1.4 million a year in, in our gravel budget. That includes where we crush concrete. That includes where we crush concrete to pick up some cheap aggregate. That's going to be $550 a ton where we're crushing in those two piles for Odo and Luton this year. Our next biggest expenditure is new equipment, around $800,000 a year. After that is diesel fuel at $500,000 a year. Gasoline runs us about $1,000. Equipment repairs, we're in the neighborhood of... I don't want to say because I think I'll be wrong on that one. But, I mean, that's really the biggest end of our expenditures is that payroll, gravel, equipment, and then the diesel fuel to keep everything running. We try and do a balance between doing our maintenance graveling and improvement of those gravel roads to the extent we can and improving our structures with the work that we're doing on bridges and culverts out there.
Mark, I've heard a lot about quality of gravel. I'm sure other supervisors have to some degree. I think it might be helpful if you would... I know you emailed me something today in regards to comparison to national standards, something like that where you could bring up that issue either at a future board meeting or maybe even at a town hall meeting to discuss how we line up with other counties because sometimes I hear, you know, one thing from someone and a completely opposite thing from another. And it would be helpful to have that discussion with some actual reports and allow people to, you know, get their questions answered as well.
I just handed the board a copy of our gravel gradation in comparison, it's the same spreadsheet that I'd emailed you, in comparison to what those national recommendations are. The sources I pulled were two manuals. One's the South Dakota LTAP manual that's been used as the textbook for the motor grader classes here in Iowa for a lot of years. The second one is an FHWA manual that was published in August of 2015. The gravel gradation we're running actually runs a bit coarser than what those recommended standards are. When you're putting gravel on a road, it really takes a blend of the coarse material and the fine. The fine helps bind and keep that material in place up on top of the road. It also makes it so that it's traversable for people. You had the opportunity to drive the McCannum Base Road we built on Andrew and 240th. Until we put the finer gravels up on top of that chokestone, you could barely go down the road without the sensation that you were going to roll off when you're trying to run on very coarse gradations. The fact that some of those other roads that had been problematic in the past, when they were strengthened with considerable investment in gravel, and again, this was to keep that CF project open, shows that, you know, the gravel that we're using is within that aggregate base gradation that's recommended both by Federal Highway and that South Dakota manual. I had heard that our neighbor to the south was mentioned as one of those that their roads look better. They're actually buying gravel out of our right quarry. Asked any of the folks in Anthem, they were... Last fall, they were seeing four Monona County semis a day running through their town on multiple trips. We are, we instituted, and I think it was 2011 or 2012, a program where during daily production by our aggregate producers, we send an inspector out to grab samples off the belt and then we run gradations on those to assure quality. The company doing the work also has a certified inspector who's running those. Then we compare the samples and we make sure that the samples are running according to our gradation. We also instituted a penalty clause that if they fail to meet that, that there's a reduction, I believe it's 10% of the cost for the aggregate produced for those portions of the run, of a day's run or a two-day run if they have that much of a problem, that they lose money on in that period. So, we've found that we've had better... We've found that we've had better gravel since we instituted that.
Anything further, Mr. Hung?
Well, thank you, Mark. Obviously, these gentlemen are eager to get their case across and I think they speak for a lot of people in the county that drive on these roads. And I didn't drive on all of them, but the ones I did were pretty bad. So, I just wanted to bring that up and, you know, they're more than willing to give tours to other county supervisors if any of you guys would like to do your own.
It is spring thaw in Iowa. I'll send each of the board members a link, but on our County Engineer Service Bureau, there's a Jones County news feature from Channel, I think it's Channel 8 over in Cedar Rapids, that they're interviewing a fellow that's in Jones County and he's saying that he's never seen the roads as bad as they are this year. It sounds like a number of the people that called me. It's just springtime in Iowa. There's a time period where we have to go through some of this. Any of our roads that are getting truck traffic right now and we do see some grain hauling already this year. They're just, they're just taking a beating. They're very wet and it's going to take a little time for them to shape up. We have a great drying week this week, so hopefully by Friday, we'll be looking better. We'll be continuing to work on them. We've got our 2017 gravel purchase in place. The guys are hauling our stockpiled gravel out to the roads to take care of those thin spots as quickly as we can address.
So, I have, Mr. Chair.
Just make sure that new gravel rocks.
Making sure what's? Rocks.
I thought we were going to get through the meeting without one, but apparently not. Sounds like a good time.
I've already heard a few stories.
What's that?
I've already heard a couple from Raddig. That wasn't the first one.
Anything further? We are adjourned.